All right, we're gonna get started. And hello. We have our regular meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board. Today is Tuesday, August 15th, 2023, and we're at the City of Cape Coral Council Chambers. And if we could... Point of silence to get started. Thank you. If we could stand for a pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Thank you. If we could have a roll call?
Thank you, sir. Please make sure that your mics are open. Manaya?
Present.
Jackson?
Present.
Ataselli?
Present.
Long?
Here.
Here.
Michaels?
Present.
Stout? Absent? Excused? Parent representatives? Hoagland?
Present.
Soto?
Present.
Great. Thank you. If we could have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second. Great. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. How about a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great. Well, now we have public comment. So, public comment is limited to three minutes per individual, and we have up to 45 minutes for total comment. Anyone from the public like to share their view? Who wants? Okay. Well, thank you. And now for our consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda, Mrs. Conzie, you'd like to talk a little bit about, or?
I don't have anything to pull unless anybody has a question about any of the...
Questions?
...items on the consent agenda?
Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we have the superintendent's report.
Hello, everyone. Jackie Collins, Superintendent. Welcome back. We had a nice summer break. It was very busy for us at the charter schools. You know, we gear down, then we gear right back up. So, we've had a very busy whirlwind of about a month and a half. I have some housekeeping things I just want to update the board on. I'll just go through them briefly. If you have any questions, you can stop me mid-sentence, or you can stop me at the end. I do want to let you know that the first day back was very smooth. One of the best first days back, I think, in the history of our school system. Our car line miraculously was smooth and fast, and I think it had a lot to do with our elementary schools having kindergarten camp, where they train the parents to how to pull up to the front of the schools, get in and out of the car quickly and efficiently. And I really do believe it thinks... I think it helps car line when we all come back. Our students were very happy, well-mannered, glad to be reunited with friends. We had an opening presentation on creating a culture of kindness, compassion, and empathy in our school system. We wanted to make sure that our educators remembered why they were there, that they create a nurturing environment where they not only impart knowledge, but they instill exemplary values in our children. And we also have to foster an inclusive environment and infuse our lessons with empathy and purpose. So, that went over very well, and I challenged the teachers to put some kind of quote about kindness, empathy in action in your signature line, up on your board. And it was great because I saw a lot of correspondence and the maintenance of that philosophy as we started the school year. So, hopefully that'll continue throughout the year. The campus looks terrific. We had all the buildings power washed, the stairwells power washed, we painted hallways, we buffed and maxed floors. The landscaping was done, the trees were trimmed, we had flowers planted. We're still waiting on some FEMA items, but generally, the schools really look terrific. We had a city manager walk through just to do, you know, a walkabout to see what he thought, and he was very pleased. So, I'm delighted to say that our campus is looking really very, very good. We wrapped up over the summer, the end of FY '23, closed enrolled purchase orders over, started fiscal year '24. It's a busy process for our bookkeepers, but they are... We've got our new year ready to rock and roll, and we did it on time and in a timely fashion. Some new projects that we're working on, we made a switch in our parent communication platform over the summer. It was almost a last-minute decision. We're gonna use School Messenger now, and it's a program that talks to our student information management system, which is Focus, so that we don't have to continue to do very arduous manual rollovers when any time data changes. So, it'll just upload nightly from Focus to School Manager. We have to do... We have to create the data and set up the system, and that's going to take some time. But I think once we go through that process, the parent communication system will be flawless. We're also saving about $15,000 moving to this new program, and it's a local program. They're based in Florida. So, we're... It's taking us some time, but the rollout should be this week and into next week for a temporary platform, and about a month for a permanent platform that updates nightly. So, that's a big undertaking, and I have Dr. Brian Romano working on that for us. She's our liaison between the companies, Lee County and us. Speaking about projects, the portable project, we received our temporary certificate of occupancy at four o'clock, the day before school started. And I have to thank Paul Clingham and the Capital Improvement Group of Individuals because, like I told the city manager, I don't think they slept very much the last couple of weeks leading up to the opening day. It was Mark Ridenhour, Gino Notoriani, Steve Ellis, Vince Getero with permitting. I mean, they got this project through. There were hurdles. We had some hiccups, but we got the big issues solved, the fire, the safety components, and we've got those kids in the portables. Some of these pictures are gonna be coming up shortly. You can see how beautiful they look. The classrooms are terrific. They smell good. The floors are shiny. When you think of what we came from, huge. It's a huge improvement. We've got grass and landscaping. They're gonna come up in one second, and I'm gonna just pause my speech until you see these pictures. They're really terrific and really very impressive. I'm gonna get back to that one in just a second because that was a big project from our Eagle Scouts. There they are, buildings one and two. You'll see the orange fence, that's where the new playground's going to go. That's inside one of our classrooms. Look at those shiny, happy faces. The classrooms are beautiful. That's the building on the left. And look at the grass. We haven't had grass up here in 15 years. So, I mean, that's another... One of our portable pictures. So, we are delighted that that project is being finalized. There's still some kinks that our project managers are working out. They're not completely done yet, but the major hurdles are over. So, I thank everyone that participated in that project. It was a huge hurdle, and we did it. They did it. They did it. Speaking of projects, we have our playgrounds that are being... All the pieces are now delivered. We have, at Oasis North, the footers have been installed. They go down deep. The concrete has to cure for the shade structure. It's a very involved project. They are grading it as we speak. They're going to mark the undergrounds within a week's time, and once the undergrounds are marked, we can start building the structure. So, OEN is going in first. OES is going to happen later. So, we're talking about a four- to six-week implementation period for OEN, and then they'll move right after that to OES. It's unfortunate, we had some delays in shipping. We just had some recent delays because there is a lift station back by where the playground is at OES, and our playground structure does not leave the big, heavy equipment that needs to get to the lift station in case there's an emergency. The lift station is where the wastewater goes. So, if it has to be pumped, we've got to get the big machine back there, and we're going to have to move our playground at OES over about three feet to the south. So, that's a little bit of a holdup, but we caught it. So, that project, I'm anticipating early October, unfortunately. And it's not due to anyone's particular problem. We've been on top of it. Permits are ready to go. We just have run into some issues. So, on another note, speaking about projects, the high school team, Jackie Corey, the principal, Mike O'Brien, athletic director, and myself, met with the City of Cape Coral to discuss the concept for the Oasis Field, football field. We discussed the scope of work, ideas, layout, parking, buildings, amenities. We based it on the 2020 plan that we had developed back in the day. We enhanced some of those features. We talked about dimensions, things like that. We're in the initial stages of coming up with a concept plan. The timeline is a little confusing. We didn't really understand that portion of it, but that's still in negotiation with the procurement department. So, there's not much we can discuss at this point, but we've gotten the engineering company, who was awarded the bid, to listen to what our needs are and to kind of develop the plan. And it's very layered with surveys of land, water management. It's not a simple concept. So, I wanted the board to know, and the foundation, that those talks are underway, and I'm hoping that by the end of this year, we'll have something solid that we can then move forth and start talking about where to go from there. But that... It was an interesting conversation. It got us excited because it is a multi-use facility, but, you know, primarily for Oasis High School. I mean, we met with Parks and Rec about different types of fields. It was a great conversation. Brought some new, interesting things to the table. What kind of field do you want? Do you want turf, or do you want imitation turf? So, we just started the initial conversation. So, we're very pleased that those conversations are underway. Also, including some of new projects, we had Karen Michael's son, Luke, from Troop 777, complete his Eagle Scout project. I've got a picture of it up on the screen, and it is really terrific. They built an outdoor classroom under shade, which is far between, out there, and they built benches so that we can sit out there. And I believe the benches convert to tables. Am I correct? There it is. That's it right there. Those are all the participants that built that structure, and it really is going to be a really nice place to have an outdoor classroom gathering once it gets a little cooler. So, we are very proud that that's part of our outdoor area. Okay. So, we're done with projects. I wanted to let you know that transportation has approximately 1,391 students assigned to buses. We have 41 students on the waiting list, waiting for a bus, primarily at the middle school and high school, believe it or not. We have something in our policy that states if you don't ride the bus for 15 consecutive days in a period of 30 days, we can revoke your seat because we have families that can't get their kids to school without the ability to have transportation provided. So, by the end of September, we will review those families that aren't consistent riders. Some families like to reserve a seat on the bus just in case, but we don't have the affordability or the availability for families to do that. We need to have full-time riders on those buses, and that's how we get paid. And part of our FEFP allocation is based on how many full-time riders we have. So, we need to fill those buses. We've been working very diligently to get all those riders an assigned seat, and we have done that, which is always a big hurdle at the beginning of the school year. So, thank you to Tammy and her team for getting that done. Let's see. Playground. We've got some great ACE stats. We have received 61 ACE diplomas received. 36 of those diplomas are from current seniors this year. They already got... They already received their diploma. We took 849 ACE exams, and we passed 625 of those ACE exams, which is... Which equates to a 75% pass rate, which is pretty impressive. Am I right, Ms. Corey? They're not simple exams. They're not easy exams. So, we're delighted with those statistics. I think that's... Oh, there's one more thing I wanted to discuss. I want to put it in the back of the board's brain that we have a strategic planning meeting that we need to do. It's... We've exhausted our 20 to 23 strategic plan. We've met the majority of those goals. We need to have a plan to give... Bring you back to light to what we've met and where we need to go. And typically, we do it in a series of steps. So, what I'd like to do is send out early October, a survey to all parents, asking them... It's a perception survey, asking them questions about their experience as a parent, what the benefits are of the system, what their needs are that they see that are met and not met, weaknesses, wants, desires, what are we missing, what are we lacking. I like to do that in October because I have about 400 new families that have come on campus just in our kindergarten population, and they don't know our system very well yet. And we've had a lot of new families. So, that gives them time to acclimate. So, I'd like to get the survey information down, and I like to analyze the data. And also, my team is going mid-October to California, to the Aurora Institute, to listen to a couple of days' worth of ideas on what the future looks like for learning platforms, primarily those that will get us through the next pandemic, the next hurricane. It's called competency-based learning. It's a lot like PBL, but it has to do with the ability to switch carefully and constructively to an online platform and to go back and forth between online platforms and what happens in the classroom. So, we're going to go, especially at the secondary level, and learn what these platforms look like and see how they're implemented. We're gonna go for three days, three or four days. It's gonna be a fast trip. So, that's going to kind of disrupt the strategic plan schedule. So, when I get back, towards the end of October, 23rd through 31st, I'd like to analyze the survey data. I'm also gonna survey staff and students. And then, November 1st through 13th, that's the first two weeks, I'd like to have a town hall where I summarize the data and present it to parents in a forum where they can speak publicly and share some of their thoughts and concerns. Some are not... They'd rather share their thoughts and concerns in person rather than on a survey where they're anonymous. So, we'll capture both the anonymous survey group and the people that want to come in, in particular, in public. You know, one time, we had a great turnout with a town hall. I think... I hope we have a good turnout this time. It seems when things go really well, nobody wants to come, which is kind of good in a way, but disconcerting to us because then we don't get that input. So, I think with a good amount of advertising, we'll get our parents to come and to speak up. And then, once I can tabulate the data from the town hall, that's when I'd like to present what I want to the board, and that's when we go into our strategic planning meeting. That would be session number one. If we need to have a session number two, we can have that in January, but we'd like to have this plan rolled out for implementation, starting at the latest in February of 2024. And I'd like the plan to go for a three-year period, but we can, of course, discuss that. So, I'd like you just to tuck those dates in mind, and as we get closer, we can formalize dates that work for you and your calendar if you'd like to attend the town hall in particular. I would hope that you can, and the strategic planning sessions. Okay. Are there any questions?
Where do you plan on having the town hall?
Town hall, we usually have it in the high school or the middle school and cafeteria. Now that we have a grading sound system in the gym, we could even have it in the high school or middle school gym.
Back to the full-time bus riders. Are we on a wait for anybody to ride the bus? That's wanting to ride the bus?
We are. We have about 44 students.
How many people are we about?
44 students, and I want to say 36 at the secondary level, probably eight at the elementary level.
So, we have students that aren't riding the bus every day and just kind of holding up some of those seats?
I believe so, and we'll find that out by mid to end of September.
Okay. And it was a 15-days consecutive riding the bus? Is that what you said would constitute a...
Out of a 30-day period, they have to ride... I said incorrectly. Out of a 30-day period, they have to ride for at least 15 days or more.
Okay. Because there's... You know, there's a lot of parents whose works... Their schedules change, so I think they do exactly that. They put their kids on the bus the days that they can't pick them up, which isn't every day. So, it's gonna be a harder one for some of those parents, I think, but I'm sure you'll do fine and figure that out.
We'll figure it out, and I can share those... I can share those results with you to see how many there are. But truly, remember, funding comes with full-time ridership, and that's key for our transportation department because it's expensive to run a transportation department, and we usually don't, you know, make money. We're in the red.
Yes.
I wanted to circle back to, you mentioned that you're using a new communication system in order to sort of communicate with the parents, and I was wondering, what are you guys using, I guess, in the interim while you're waiting for this new system to be implemented?
That's a good question. Parent Square is still working. It hasn't rolled over from last year, so we kind of have to be creative. And as to how we capture everyone, we have to... If we're gonna send a message out to the middle school, we've got our sixth and seventh graders that have moved up to seventh and eighth grade, but then we have to go to the fifth-grade population to include them because they're now sixth graders. We've also did... We've done a manual upload of current information into School Messenger. So, we can communicate out to parents, and the high school is rolling out this week how to get parents to tap into School Messenger. It's very simple. It's a very simple way, but if you have a login with Focus, you can very easily log into Parent... To School Messenger. So, we're not down at all, but while we're doing this big rollover, we've got our temporary measures in place. So, you might get something from School... From Parent Square or School Messenger, depending on where we are in the process, but nothing is down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Appreciate the updates, as always. Always good to hear the most significantly positive news going on in the school system. I just wanted to circle back to the portables. I would agree. I appreciate all the effort that went into that from all involved. They look great. I had a question regarding the overhang over the walkway. There is not one. Was there one previously for the portables in that?
There was. And the overhang is very convenient because it keeps our students dry because it rains every day.
Sure.
And that was... That wasn't one of the items that were of the ultimate necessity to get those kids in the building, but I know that Mr. Brown has been talking to our project manager, Gino, to get that in place. Unfortunately, it's gonna... It's a project that's over $10,000. We have to go out and get three quotes.
Sure.
So, Gino is in charge of that, but that process is gonna take some time.
Did you mention getting them in the building? But now, in some instances, they're trapped in the building. It's raining or lightning. My daughter, the other day, for example, is in the portables, and I think they had to eat lunch there and have hot meals delivered because they couldn't come out of the portables to go to the cafeteria. So, I figured that would create some issues. I was wondering if that was something that was overlooked, or whether it was a budgetary constraint, or...
No. I think it was just we needed to focus on getting those... Getting the certificate of occupancy in there. But when you're not there, present, and seeing that, you don't think of that as a very important issue, which it is.
Yeah. No, I would have never thought of it.
So, I think Gino's on it. I mean, he knows that when we mean business, we mean yesterday is when we need it. So, we'll stay on top of it, but yeah.
Appreciate the update.
It's a problem. We know. We know.
Great. Any other questions? And, Mrs. Conzie, one question for the town hall meetings for the strategic planning initiative. In the past, have we used any kind of like... How do you gather data in those? Like, what's the most efficient way that you've seen that you've gathered data there?
In the past, when we've had productive town hall meetings, we have a standing room only with parents making comments. We record the session. We take notes, and then we analyze, and we kind of calculate. We analyze the data to see what are the parents complaining about the most? What do they find that the strengths are? And we share what we know from the surveys, but that's a... It's an honest way to collect how people are feeling about the school. Do they like the programming? Do they like the Google platform? It's kind of done manually. It's a manual process. We listen, we take notes, we make... We address it in that kind of fashion.
And the only reason I bring it up is that in the Resiliency Program, they have a number of ways to make it even easier, right, to collect the data? So, you might want to compare notes as to how they're doing it to see if they've got like a little application, they've got other things, and just to stream... And they're able to turn around a summary report, like, within the next couple of days, which is much harder because I've done the manual way as well, and that takes you a lot longer than a couple of days.
So, who would have contacted about that? I'm sorry.
Pick you back off that one. We were at the Resiliency meeting. There's a QR code that they put on the overhead projector, and you just take your phone and you scan it, and then the questions go right to your phone, and you can answer the multiple-choice questions right on your phone, and it's a real-time input, and it tells you what your results are right then and there. So, that's definitely a probably way to do it.
Okay. Very good. I'll talk to you afterwards about that.
Fantastic. Great, great, great update.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have the city manager teams' report.
City managers' report. You said city managers' report?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, that's... I'm not the city manager, but I'll report anyways. We're in the final months of completing the audit, the annual audit, and at the same time, we have a presentation. We need to amend the budget. We took in a lot of grants this year, so we need to amend the budget for those grants, which will be done here shortly, as soon as we get this up and running. I don't think it's mine. It's not this one up here?
Nope.
Certainly not that one down there. Okay. We'll get it up and running here in just a second. Other than that, I think the last meeting that we had with you all, we went through our... At least one of you did. Went through all of our service-level agreements, and so people are working hard to get those back up and back to you all here shortly. So, I just want to be... Keep you informed of what we're doing. It's been a very busy summer, as you can tell. Our folks got your portables up and running, which is a great thing for the schools opening. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the delay. Nicole Reitler, Management Budget Administrator for the city. We're just trying to switch this over. Just be patient with us for one second. Right. It looks like we got it up and running. So, as I stated, I'm here today to walk you guys through the fiscal year 2023 budget. This year, we only do have one budget amendment for you to review. Generally, the purpose of a budget amendment is to modify any estimates of revenue or appropriations that you previously adopted. With the charter school, we do have four general reasons why we adopt or amend our budget, first being previously approved items by the board. So, anything you approve at previous meetings, we come back and then adjust our budget. Any reclassifications of budget items between categories, generally capital to operating or operating to capital. Additional requests for funding, if they come back and need additional monies for like buses or any bigger purchases, playgrounds, we would amend the end of year. And then, lastly, transfers between our internal funds and our general funds. This year, we are requesting an amendment from your previously adopted budget of $44,537,809 to $45,089,577. It's an increase of $551,768. We will be adjusting our intergovernmental revenues, which will be increases due to previously approved grants, as well as... as well as increasing our miscellaneous revenues for donations that we receive throughout the year. And lastly, offsetting it in our operating expenditures. Overall, what we're requesting this year is ten grants and two donations that we previously received. Back on December thirteenth, you guys approved ESRS grants in the total of $407,000 to be added to the budget. On November eighteenth, you approved Title II grants for $26,753. On August sixteenth, we approved Title IV and TAPS for a total of $61,000 and $47,000. And lastly, we received donations of $6,000 as well as a Florida Civics and Debate Initiative of $3,000 for a total of $9,000 in donations. So in conclusion today, we're just asking for approval of the final budget amendment, bringing your total budget up. Any questions?
Questions?
Just really briefly, can you or someone explain the, the school hardening grant, what that, what those dollars are going to be going towards?
Which one?
The school hardening grant, the TAPS 22A.
So the school hardening grant?
Mm-hmm.
That is with TAPS, Jackie, I don't know if you can speak to that?
We get a variety of, of school hardening grants every year from the state of Florida. The principals do a review of what their needs are and they, and they spend those funds on those needs. For example, upgraded security cameras, different door locks on their doors. Those grants are funny because they, they come out in the, in the spring or in, in the winter time, I think, but they roll over until the next school year for these TAPS grants.
Yes.
So it's hard for us, it's, it's hard to keep track. But they can be used on anything the principals deem necessary to harden their buildings.
Awesome, good to know, thank you.
Any other questions? So we need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve of any budget?
Second.
Any further discussion? And should we have a name?
Manaya.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Ataselli. Bong.
Yes.
Michaels.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. And now we have the chair's report. There is the Florida Charter School Governance Conference that's coming up. It'll be Saturday, September ninth, nine AM to four thirty, so it's in Jacksonville. If any of our board members would like to attend, you have two options. One, attend in person in Jacksonville or virtually. And in a couple of years before, maybe right before the pandemic, we thought it might be helpful that if, if any of, of the board members did want to attend virtually, we could attend possibly in a classroom at the, at one of the schools and, and then compare notes, right? So, so that offer is on the table, so if you'd like to do that, Mrs. Collins, we'll make a couple of classrooms available and we can attend virtually. So you're, you're welcome, it's, it's at no cost, and even if you go to Jacksonville to attend, it's at no cost, correct? Okay, so that's, and, and I, I've attended the last three, and, and there's always a great set of workshops that gives you a sense of what other charter schools are doing, what best practices are, and so it's always been, been pretty, pretty helpful. And that was the proposed governing workshops. The other, in terms of resilient Lee, you know, there's two, two facets of resilient Lee. One was the, the first $1.1 billion grant that was awarded to Lee County. I think we're the, the second location in the country that's ever received anything over a billion. And that's the first big grant that we'll receive as, as, as a result of Hurricane Ian. Out of that, out of that funding, there's, in the $1.1 billion, it came from HUD, so it's predominantly for housing. $660 million is allocated for housing-related projects throughout the county. There's, $352 million is in public facilities and infrastructure. There's another one for $15 million for public services, and then some planning and administration, which is closer to $80 million. So they did present in a town hall that took place over the last couple of weeks, what the general view of the programs would be for how the $1.1 billion would be spent. They're going through, you know, each city to get, get a view and get feedback from, from the community on the plans. But as an example, there's individual housing programs that's for specific income levels. It would, it would help a potential buyer up to $75,000 in a down payment. There's home repairs, there's home evaluations. So again, it's definitely for affordable housing kind of populations. Then there's local government programs that have been funded, housing development programs that have been funded. And so, so that's been, been helpful. So that's the first $1.1 billion. The, the resilient Lee initiative is, is the one that could potentially be between forty to sixty billion, if not more, over the next five years. That planning is taking place. There's been, each branch has, has developed in essence the draft programs. Those will be vetted over the next couple of months. And then those that get approved will have a very formal program plan included with all of the, the funding components. And then that is going to be presented to our central body task force. And if that gets approved, that'll be presented to the county commissioners, and then it would go up to potentially twenty-seven different federal agencies, right, that have parts of the funding that would become available to us. So that's a pretty interesting initiative. In the education and workforce branch, which I, which I participate on, anything from a children's services council, and what a children's services council does is it allows us to, as a county, fund daycare, after-school care. It allows us to fund tutoring services, mental health services for our, our, our students, right? So that is a pretty interesting initiative, right? That that's just one example of what, what is being viewed as something we definitely need. There's about fourteen counties throughout Florida that already have one, some of them have had them for twenty years, and it's a pretty effective way of supporting our community. And even daycare for those, those employees in the workforce, that if they don't have daycare, they can't go to work, right? And we have such, and to give you a sense of the workforce, as of about a week ago, we had 25,000 open positions in Lee County and only 8,000 people were looking for jobs, right? So, so there's a big disparity too, so we need, we need more and more in, in our workforce, right? So there's a lot being done around, how does supporting a parent in those situations help, of course, develop the pipeline of education that then results in the workforce, right? So you can't have a great workforce if you don't solve all the way down to daycare, right? So that, those are some, some big, big initiatives. Much more will, will be finalized in the next couple of months, so there'll be a more specific report. And I think the, the other interesting part is, you may be familiar with the Edison Awards. The Edison Awards, it, it's a global innovation award structure that was, the foundation is based out of Chicago. They, they annually had their events in New York. We brought them down two or three years ago here, and now we have five more years where the Edison Awards will be based here. I understand that the CEO of SpaceX is going to be here for the upcoming awards in April. But probably what affects us the most is there's the, the Young Edison Challenge. So previously, we had the, the Young, and I'm on, you know, I'm connected to that committee as well. Previously, we had the Young Edison Challenge, the last day of the event. This time, we're going to have it on April seventeenth, the first day of the event. Last time, the organization organized buses to pick up the kids and bring them into the event. It didn't work out so well, right? It didn't work out so, so this year, they're looking at how would the schools potentially assist in either getting the students to the event? Or potentially, we may have some top innovators that might come to the school, right? So those, those, those options are being weighed. There's $50,000 in scholarships that are associated with the Young Edison Challenge, and, and these are students from all over the world that are competing for this kind of stuff. But our benefit is that it is in, the, the actual event is in our backyard. And, and what we want to make sure is that each school system understands the big opportunity that this has for us of bringing like top innovators into our schools to talk about STEM and talk about how it applies. So that's pretty huge. So I'll keep you posted on how that develops. But I'll, I'll also connect you with the organizers to, to make sure that, that they know that as things get finalized, that they should contact us, right? Great, I think, I think that's it. Okay, any questions? Okay, our foundation report.
Hello. Gary Serny, President, Cape Coral Charter School Foundation. Hope you all had a nice summer, those I have not seen yet. We have some exciting things, we've also worked very hard this summer on, we have two, two big changes. One is we have merged with the Booster Club. They're, they're now a committee of the foundation for the, for the high school, which, you know, does a couple of things for us. One is our, our, our reach is exponential now because now we have athletes, art, STEM, everybody, you know, because some, some athletes just care about, I mean, athletics, you know, and so now we kind of have that far reach. We've actually made over five grand in the last four days, just on the Booster side. New money, memberships and banners, and we're, there's a lot left to do. I mean, so we're hoping we'll bring that up to thirty or forty grand for the Booster account. We actually are going to have two accounts for that, or we, we have two accounts for that, but technically it's under us now, so they're sort of dissolving as a, as their entity and they're riding under us. So they have the benefit of 501(c)(3) status and just a lot bigger support system. And, and also it kind of aligns with, with all the athletic hype, if you will. I don't know if you feel it, but I do. There's a lot of athletic hype, I mean, whether it be the little going down the path of the fields to, you know, a new principal that we actually had the pleasure to, she came to our last foundation meeting, by the way, and I know I'm all over the place, but I mean, well, Ms. Collins, she's awesome, I know you've all talked to her. We had the pleasure of spending about, what, about three hours? I think three hours with her and really ran through some stuff, and we've just found that we just align literally at every turn. You know, and, and that's, that's our, that's our job. That's how I see our job is to, you know, communicate with the principals and the superintendent and you, y'all, and, you know, and figure out what, you know, what needs to be done. So a lot of exciting things, we do have a, as far as the Booster, can I put this on here? Is that okay?
Yeah.
There's one, and as always, we're always asking for help and always asking for support, and just spread the word. That's the biggest thing you could do is just spread the word, but we do have a, why is this not?
Yeah, there's little gizmos you got to push around here.
All right, button B.
There you go.
Nice. Well, and then how do you raise this?
That would be the little, yes.
And I work in technology, by the way, I don't use overhead projectors, not since like fifth grade. Anyway, so that is a Booster kickoff meeting, it's going to be really big. We're really kicking this in overdrive, plus, you know, the school was founded, what, in '05, so guess what we have? I mean, I mean, I know, most high schools that have been around for a minute, Booster start in, and start dealing with alumni, right? So these guys have, and girls have paid their student debts off, hopefully have good careers. We want to bring them back, you know, bring them back on some level, so that's definitely in the works. But we want to make this Booster thing huge, you know, and it already has. We've, we've gone to the coaches' meetings, we have, we have found multiple avenues for teams to make their own money throughout the year. There's a lot of skin in the game, because you got to have skin, we can't do everything, you know, so a lot of skin in the games. We gave an outlet for each, or I'm sorry, we have a, a way to, for each team to apply, to do a fundraiser through us. And then they can, we just give them little guidelines and then, you know, and coach them a little bit, and then they can go do their fundraising, they can work concessions, they get 50% of all gross proceeds, not net, for whatever concessions makes, and we'll have that signup genius very, very shortly, probably next week, things like that. So we're, we're just trying to really, you know, help spark the spirit and the sports, so that is very important, we're, you know. So there's that. If you want to attend, it's, it's September fourteenth, 6:30 to 8:30 PM at Big Ten. We will have our own, we're actually going to take the whole omelette shop side, so we're not going to be like in some busy bar or something like that, it's actually going to be on the restaurant side, all ours dedicated servers, all that good stuff, and we're going to make it fun. So anyway, you're welcome to ten, and then the other thing, so, and then we're, we're doing our own. We do have a new board member, Janelle Dolan. She was the Booster Club Chair, President, and now she's on our foundation board, and then she's still the Booster Club Chair, but now it's a committee under us. I know it's a lot of info, but that's what it is. And so the other thing is our rally, we are going to do the rally. We skipped last year because of the hurricane, unfortunately, and that's, that's a pretty big moneymaker for us. So that is Saturday, October 28th, at, yes, at, at the Cape Royal Golf Course. Please attend, please buy stuff, the auction's huge. I think we made eighteen grand just off the auction last year, and that's not the whole event, but that's, you know. And then the Putt-Put Party, we're going to have that March eighth, 2024, we're actually separating them. It's a little mini-event that we created. Lighthouse Awards are Friday, April nineteenth. We're going to do that at La Venzia again, because again, yacht club is, you know, it is what it is. Gone, or let me call it. And that's, I think that's about it. Oh, and do you, how many of you have kids? I mean, I know most of you do, do y'all have kids at this, in the school system? Join the Booster Club membership if you can, it's 25, 50, 100 bucks. Every penny goes to, to the team, you select the team, if you have a couple of kids, three kids, four kids, click them all, it'll go 25, 25, 25. And our phenomenal treasurer that we're not, try not to overload, is going to have sub-accounts for every team, and they're just going to have their own money, and they can, you know what I mean? They say we need this, you buy it, you know, that's very simple, very quick and motivating, you know, for them. That's it, any?
Questions?
I probably forgot something huge, but that's okay, what, any questions? Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And staff comment? No staff comment today, okay, unfinished business, none, new business?
May I be recognized, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask the board to, to delay 15A to the end of the meeting? I want to review it before the board considers it.
Surely.
Thank you.
Okay. So 15B, we can move on to 15B? Okay.
I cut off my agenda, unfortunately, but I have 15Bs request for approval to meet the Cape Royal Charter School Governance Board meeting in June, the last Tuesday of the month. Every year, we have to submit a plan to the Le County School District and then to the state of Florida regarding our mental health allocation plan. We don't receive the information from Le County, our allocations, the new forms, until mid-June. And typically falls after we've had our last governing board meeting for fiscal year. Therefore, we have to submit that plan, that has to be approved by the governing board with a tentative approval date, whatever we need in August. So in order to avoid that, we've done that for the last three years, it's been fine, but really, really, what we, what we need to do is submit the mental health plan to the board before it's due to Le County, which is usually in the end of August, or their August first submission date. So it would help tremendously, we could push that move until the last week of June, then we'd have a long enough time to receive our allocation, propose our plan, figure out how we're going to spend those dollars and have the board approve it, and submit it within the proper time. So I'll give her a motion to move the governing board meeting last Tuesday.
Motion to move the board meeting in June?
Second.
Okay, discussion? And, and given vacations that folks may take, if we don't have a quorum, the implication? implication is that we won't be able to approve it, right? So I think that's the only consideration for all of us is how how important is that that week where you wouldn't be here? Or could we have virtual participation?
You cannot vote.
I mean, still have a regular board meeting, but if somebody needs to be virtual, so we can have a quorum?
I believe that you can attend virtually, but you cannot create a quorum virtually. You must be present to vote.
Yeah. So that'd be the only consideration for us to? Okay, any any other questions or thoughts? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great. And are we able?
Permission to be recognized, Mr. Chair. Board, I'd like this board to consider continuing this item to give me an opportunity to research an issue further. I don't think it would be detrimental at all to the operation of the school at all, because there is an arrangement and there is a verbal agreement as to how the parties are using the property. So I don't see any detrimental effect of continuing this item to the next board meeting. If the board would indulge me with that request, I would appreciate it.
Really? So we need a motion to move it to next meeting?
Just to.
Postpone it? Postpone it indefinitely.
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so final board comment. You want to?
I I did have a thought on the bus situation, but I can't, I didn't mention it before because I I can't wrap my head around what my own idea is. But my thought was, is there a way to have some sort of a parental forum for carpooling? You know, not everybody knows a lot of other parents that could help drive their kids. But I don't know what that would look like or how. So I'm sort of throwing an idea out there that I can't really formulate, but maybe there's some other smarter people here that can think about how that could maybe work, just that that parents would be able to communicate. Because like, school messenger is not going to work for that. And there's the Facebook pages, but I'm not sure if that's the right idea for that either. But if there'd be some sort of a way to have an opportunity for parents to coordinate on carpooling, just an idea.
I can get together with the team and we can brainstorm to see how that might work.
Please, no more apps.
I don't know, is it currently happening?
There's so many apps.
We'll look into that.
And maybe it's not feasible in the end, but.
But we'll look into it.
Just something to consider.
Absolutely.
And I think sort of actually kind of continuing on that that same vein, I was thinking, and I believe it was Superintendent Collins that mentioned this in the beginning, that how smooth the the car line had started out for this first couple of days in school. And I know that I I am talking to so many parents in the in different school systems, and it's very tough right now, that car line. So it makes a huge difference with parents being able to get their kids to work, that you guys have been able to get that sorted out and in keeping that smooth. It just really makes things go a lot easier. So I was very happy to hear that at least we're doing good in that in that area.
Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations on the start of the new school year. It seems to have gone off without a hitch so far, and that's thanks to all the planning and foresight that all the staff has put before this day. So I think it's going to be a great school year, and I'm looking forward to it.
No comments?
Good, thank you.
Good? Okay. Okay, well, as we wrap up again, it's just just so exciting to hear that the portables were ready just on the nick of time and that the students are happy, the teachers are happy. There's still more to do, right? But we we got through a major hurdle. So again, the collaboration with the city greatly appreciated that it worked extremely well to start this new year. And there's always going to be curveballs, you know? Every year, there's maybe a big curveball, maybe a small curveball. But this team has shown that it can respond and make it work and still be extremely successful. So here's to a start of a great new year. And and we thank all of you that that make it that rewarding for all of our our students and teachers. All right. Motion to adjourn? Adjourned.